Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is seven o'clock. The annual town meeting for the town of Upton has come to order. Town clerk, this one legal. Thank you very much. So, hello. My name is Dave Baker, I'm the moderator. Welcome this evening to the annual town meeting. So I will go through the rules and ranks with you in a couple of minutes. But one of the first things we need to do is ask the chairman of the board of selectmen to be recognized so that we can do the motion. So, to all rise please.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, could you remain there, please? Sorry about that. Um, the moment of silence for the folks over the past year.
I request a moment of silence for the members of the town that we've lost in the past year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated.
So at this time, I'm going to read off the list of those who are visiting. So if you could please be quiet so that I can get through the list here, and then we'll have a motion to accept those business. The DPW director, Dennis Westgate. Valley Tech superintendent, Michael Fitzpatrick. The town manager, Joe Layden. From Cobbleman and Page, the two lawyers, Brian Mazur and Stephen Johnson. The town planner, Michael Antonellis. Collector Treasurer, Jessica Gomez. Superintendent, member of the regional school district, Maureen Cohen. Library director, Matthew Batstoll. Resident, Matthew Fear. Also from Valley Tech, Anthony Steele. Resident from Upton, James Woods. Finance director, Kenny Costa. An employee of the town, Paul Moshan. Employee, Grace Brownell. And the member of the regional school district, Jay Byer. Later on, we'll have a few more that come in. When we do, we'll deal with those later. Is there a motion to accept those business?
All right.
Is there a second? Second, any discretion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Thank you. Opposed, red cards. Motion unanimous. So, for those of you who haven't been here before, we used to voice votes. And I'd always mess up on the first one. Then I'd apologize, and we'd go through the night. But I guarantee you, one of these motions, I'm going to say yea or nay. Just understand that. So I apologize right off the bat. So, okay, good. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, good. All right. So, um, I want to thank all the folks who have helped set up the town meeting. Member of regional, Paul Morden, the man on the microphone over there, all the men with the picture over there, in living color, okay? And everyone else, the town board of selectmen, town manager, the assistant to the town manager, town clerk, like I say. Anybody else that helped get involved with this, tell us, the checkers, and everybody, thank you very much. Okay? So I want to ask you all, at this point in time, everybody probably has one of these now, do one of two things. Turn them off or put it silent. Okay? Thank you very much. I put mine on silent a little while ago. So there it is. Um, and, do every first-time attendees to the town meeting, stand up, please. Come on, stand up. Thanks for coming, and hopefully you'll come to the next one, too. So, okay, great. Okay. So, general format of the meeting, as all of you know, those of you who have been here before and understand the process, a warrant has been posted, it's been posted for one week, it's been posted on the website, and in three locations, in town, in the library, the post office, and at the town hall and the community center. Yes, exactly. Okay? So what's going to happen is essentially, we're going to go through each article. What will happen is the sponsor of those articles will come up with this microphone, they will make a motion. So they'll say, "I move..." whatever it is that they will... I'll ask for a second. I'll ask for finance, pretty recommendation, for those that are financial in nature, which most of them are. I would then open it up to discussion. And if you have something you want to say, then you would come up, wait to turn at the microphone, speak to the issue that's on the floor. So, just as something to consider, if you're sitting way, way out there, and you're thinking, "I'm probably going to have a lot of things to say tonight", it's okay to sit closer to the microphone, though it just helps us save time as we're going through the process. There are plenty of seats up here to do that. So please, don't hesitate to do that. One thing you all need to understand is that there are no personality-type statements allowed on the floor. Personally, say, "What does that mean?" Well, someone's up there speaking, and they might say, "Well, the guy that just spoke before me, Jim, he has no words." No, you can't do that. I'm going to hit the gavel as loud as I can, and when Ash is step back from the microphone, then I'll have a little discussion, or not a discussion, I'll have a statement to make about what you did wrong. So, let me tell you real quick what's going to happen when that happens. If you do say something that's out of line, I'll ask you to step back. I'll ask the individual, after they step back, I'll explain to them what they did wrong. And I'll then ask them, "Do you think you can continue in an appropriate manner?" They can only say one of two things, either yes or no. If they say no, I'll say, "Okay, take your seat, no problem." If they say yes, I'll say, "I'll give you a second time to act appropriately." I'll give them that second chance. If for some reason, they don't act appropriately, I'll ask them to step back and sit down. If they choose not to step back and sit down, I will ask them to step back and leave the meeting. If it continues, and they don't do that, I will ask the officer in the back to escort them out of the meeting. Many of you have come to many meetings, but I've moderated for the past, I'm not going to say how many, but many years. I've never had to get past the first thing. "Please step back from the microphone." I want to keep it that way. You have all, over the years, have been very civil in this community, and I want that to continue, and I appreciate that as moderator. It makes my job a lot easier when you all know what you're doing and know how to do things. That really helps a lot. So, thank you very much. Um, let's see. The next order of business that we're going to have with regard to the agenda, we're going to have what's called a consent calendar, and I'll explain what that means in a couple of minutes. But before we do that, the chairman of the finance committee, Mr. Flaherty. And we've done this before, sometimes it's a number or two that changes in the budget area. So if you could get out the finance committee report. Mr. Flaherty told me there's one number that has to be changed. So, Mr. Flaherty, what page is that number on?
I believe it would be page 18, Mr. Moderator.
Flip this baby open, page 18. Okay, and which department is it?
All right, the modifications, Mr. Moderator, in relation to the line item 152.
152, yeah.
On number 152.
Yeah.
All right. On that first line there, salaries, 0100152-5100-5100. The printed number is 110156. That was a misprint, there was modification afterwards. The number that should be there is 105500.
Okay, thank you.
13,500.
Got it?
When you make that adjustment, the line that we're going to be voting on in 152, it goes from 165356 to 16700.
Okay, thank you very much.
And there is one other addition, correction, omission, if I may, Mr. Moderator. When this document was printed through some oversight, we're not pointing fingers at anybody, if you go to page 44, and you may recall, Mr. Moderator, that you brought this to my attention yesterday.
Well, I did notice it, but I was doing my homework, sir, yes.
And that we go from Article 8 to Article 10, you should have gotten a handout that was available when you came in that contained Article 9.
Thank you.
That is what will be discussed in normal course.
Thank you very much. And just so the folks know, those of you out there who know the laws and everything you're saying, "Oh my goodness, was Article 9 posted in the warrant of the three locations?" That's the first thing I did, when I saw this, I checked. I want to make sure it's posted in the warrant. It is in the warrant. So everything's fine, just a typo, you got Article 9, and when we get to that, we'll deal with it in the appropriate ways. Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. So when we get to the budgetary process, those are the numbers to consider for that particular department. Okay, good. So, if there are any other questions about the process, what I will now do is explain to you a little thing called the consent calendar. So, the consent calendar is the following thing. Each year we have town meetings, there's usually a dozen or so articles that come up, never ever have any discussion, they never have any sort of controversy with them. So instead of going through those like all the rest of the articles, what we do is, at the beginning, we go through and we list what those are, and you then vote to accept them by unanimous consent. So, here's the thing. I'm going to go through and list what those are, have you take a quick peek in your finance committee report. If for some reason, you don't want that article put in for unanimous consent, just hold, and we'll take it off of the unanimous consent table, and we'll deal with it in due time, like we do with every other one. Okay? So what I would suggest that you do right now, if you wanted to follow along, if you opened in your warrant book to page 31, what I will then do is tell you which numbers we're going to have for unanimous consent, and I'll tell you what the title of those are. And a lot of them are self-explanatory, some may not be. I'll do a quick explanation of what they are. And lastly, a number of these articles that we have for unanimous consent involve money, and once it's stated otherwise, the money involved with those will be raised inappropriately. So, turn to page 41. So the first article for unanimous consent will be the reports of town officers and committees. The next one is Article 4, that's the 25 Water Enterprise Fund. The next article for unanimous consent is Article 5, the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. And keep in mind, those of you who are veterans, you know we do this every year to save old things. Article 6, the revolving fund spending limits. Article 7, the Upton Cable Fund article. The next one is Article 10, which is the transfer to the Opepa Fund. Article 11, which is the Chapter 9 of 7th Estate funding that they give to us to help on the roads. Then Article 14, the conservation fund funding, 5,000 a year that we've been doing for as long as I've been coming to town meetings. Article 50A, Community Preservation Fund Reserve Accounts. Article 50C, Community Preservation Town Hall Renovation Bond, that's the 20-year bond that we have for the fixing of the town hall. And then the last one is way up, Article 26, which is page 50, which is the Board of Assessors Recertification Money, 10,000 a year that we put in there. So, those are the articles that will be on the consent calendar. And since I have heard no holds on those, could I have a motion to accept those articles by unanimous consent?
Hold it, Mr. Moderator.
Seconded. All those in favor, hold up a green card. There shouldn't be any holds, so put the green cards down. We're all set, thank you very much. So all of those have now passed by unanimous consent. So those are done. Okay. Next thing to do then is Article 2, which is on page 20... Oh, I'm sorry, 40. This is a prior year bills article, it does require a full-fledged majority? Or a second?
I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of $71,078.42 for free cash to pay unpaid bills from the fiscal year 2021 and 2023 as follows. retrofit technologies in the amount of $756. Net total, 1 in the amount of $63. Health equity in the amount of $114. And WB Mason in the amount of $145.80.
Second?
Second.
Second, FinCon recommendation?
Terrible action, Mr. Moderator.
For the loss by the FinCon, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. All those opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Before we move on to Article 3, I just want to say, and I've talked with the, some members of the board on this, in the future, when we have prior year bills that are going to be brought up, it's important to have in the article what the specifics are. We did this last year, so we need to do that again going into the future. So that it's not a general, I think, but a more specific. Okay? So thank you very much. Okay. Article 3, who will be reading the motion for Article 3? Is it Mr. Chairman of the FinCon? Okay, board of selectmen, since this is your article, I want to ask, is it, or do you defer to have the finance committee chairman make the motion for Article 3?
Yes, we do.
You do, okay, thank you. Oh, one last thing I forgot. When you come to the microphone for the very first time, please state your name and address, so we know that you are a voter here in town. So I forgot that, thank you very much. Mr. Flaherty?
Do I have the permission to turn at the microphone?
Oh, no, I better not, because then everyone else is going to want to do that, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Moderator, I really think that everybody can hear you.
I know that, and your assistant there is helping out by just turning it on. As long as it's turned on and it's close by, that's fine with me. So, thank you, Mr. Flaherty, and Mr. Ensign.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Flaherty, 29th chapter. Excuse me, before I start, whoever's got the screen, you know that number up there is changed by the delta, will be reduced, that'll go on, right?
Yes.
Sure.
Mr. Flaherty? To be clear, it's going to show on the slide. I can't make the change just a second, so just...
I will...
So we'll know that when we go through it, what changed, and so on, yeah?
I move at the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all offices of the town of Upton, as provided by Mass General Act Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and to raise an appropriate amount of $28,643. To fund the expenses of the town departments in ensuing year, set forth in the items identified total budget to be voted within the document entitled Finance Committee Report, town of Upton Massachusetts fiscal year 2025 budget recommendations, and to request a hold, as amended if applicable, I vote a town meeting for those items requested hold.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Could I have the card, Mr. Flaherty?
May, sir.
Thank you very much.
Terrible action, Mr. Flaherty.
Yeah, terrible action by the FinCon. So, um, yeah, 28 million, not 28,000 like it was 100 or so years ago, but that's okay. Uh, that's the way it is. So, so for those of you who haven't been here only a few times, basically what happens is, we're going to go through the budget, I will go department by department, and if there's anything within a department that you wish to hold, what you need to do, where I say the department name, yell "HOLD!", and I'm going to say, "All right, who wants to hold? What do you want to hold?", and we'll put an H next to it. And at the end, we're going to vote on everything that wasn't held, which is most everything. Okay? We'll do that, then we'll go back and discuss those things that have been held. So, just for some historical perspective, when I started doing this, we used to go through every single individual line item. We could take hours to do. The reason why I go department by department is because the finance committee, of all those years, up till now, even with the changes that have been made in terms of how the budget's put together, always has this information to the townspeople ahead of time. So people have a chance to look at the budget, either online or on paper, and get a sense for what they might want to hold when they come to the meeting. If you were getting this information the first time tonight, then we'd have to do it the old-fashioned way, like in the bad old days, when it was one at a time. So I go by department, but if you want to hold something within a department, that's fine, and we'll do it then. That's how it's been done. So, what I want you to do now, in your vote, go to page 15. Turn to page 15, and on the top of that, it has Upton Budget Fiscal Year 25 detail, like that. And like I said, I will read the department, the names of the department. If you want to hold something, yell "HOLD!", and we'll get the details from you, and then we'll go from there. Everybody all set? Okay. So, 113, Town Meetings Elections. 114, Town Moderator. 122, Select Board. Hold, there's a hold, Select Board. Which particular number? Just read the, um, that 12-digit number there. The last two. Which one is it that you want to hold? Select Board wages, so the number is...
122, 5100, 5100.
Great. So the number that's being held is the 224,154, correct? Okay, there's a hold on that. Obviously, when something's been held, the department total underneath is going to change as well. We're not going to go through those nitty-gritty details. We all understand that. That's been held, Select Board. Next is Town Manager, 123. Finance Committee, 131. Reserve Fund, 132. Finance Department, 133. Capital Budget Committee, 137. Legal Department, 151. Personnel, 152.
Hold.
Okay, some holds, um, so, just give me the name of the, uh, the name that's being held. Like, is it Human Resources Personnel?
152, 5100, 5100.
Okay, got it. Human Resources Wages? Currently, the number is 105,500, so that's going to be held. Okay? Anything else in that department, since I heard a couple? Anything else there that is going to be held? No? Okay. Number 158, Tax Title Foreclosure. 159, Management Information Systems. 161, Town Clerk. 163, Registrar of Votes. 171, Conservation Commission. 175, Planning Board. 184, Housing Authority. One... Excuse me?
Hold.
There's a hold on the Housing Authority?
Yes.
There's only one thing there, so it's the salary number?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, right now, the number is 2250, so that's held. Okay. 192, Town Public Buildings. 210, Police?
Hold.
Hold, Police?
Yeah.
So just give me the last four numbers, please.
5100.
5100, Police Wages?
Correct.
Which would be, um, 1,826, et cetera, that's hold.
Also Utilities.
Also...
The 21, 5210.
5210, Police Utilities, the 45,000 number, that's all held as well. Okay? 220, Fire EMT Department. 241, Land Use and Inspection Services, formerly called Code Enforcement. 291, Emergency Management. 292, Animal Control.
Hold.
Hold on 292, what's the last four digits?
5111.
Animal Control Wages?
Correct.
From the 25,390, a hold on that?
Also on the 5421.
5421, that would be Animal Control Expense?
Correct.
Okay, hold on that. Okay. 294, DPW Parks Forest Street. 300, Education. 421, DPW. 422, DPW Highway Construction Maintenance. 423, DPW Snow and Ice Removal. 433, Waste Removal. 491, Cemetery. 512, excuse me, 510, Board of Health. 522, Health Services. 541, Elder and Social Services Council on Aging. 543, Veterans. 610, Library. 691, Historical Commission. 710, Retirement of Debt. 725, Debt Service Interest. 820, State Assessments. 911, Retirement. 913, Unemployment Compensation. 960, Payroll Taxes, Medicare. 945, Liability Insurance. 950, Trust Fund Commission. 990, Transfers Out. And that, I believe, is everything. The other things are warrant articles, uh, which we will deal with later, revolving fund things, so on and so forth. Okay. That's where we are. So, what I'll do, just go back, make sure we've got everything down there. I'm just going to briefly run through here for the ones that were held. So, 122, Select Board. There's a hold on Select Board Wages. There was a hold on Housing Authority.
Mr. Moderator, that take that back, the hold on the Housing Authority.
Okay. The hold, okay, thank you, I missed, yeah. The hold on the Housing Authority?
Yes.
That's going to be taken back, no objection to that? Okay? I skipped a page, sorry, folks. 152, Personnel, uh, the Human Resources Wages, okay, was held. Okay? Housing Authorities, all set. Police, two holds. Police Wages, 1,800 number, and then the Police Utilities, 35,000. Okay? Animal Control Wages was held. Animal Control Expense was held. Okay? And, is that it? Please, okay. And I believe that was it, folks. Okay, good. So, uh, those are held, so the motion that we have on the floor is to vote on everything else by unanimous consent, except for those things that have been held. So, for all those in favor of the budget, other than those that have been held, hold green cards. Great, those opposed, hold the red cards, and there shouldn't be any. Thank you very much, that goes unanimously. So, let's go back. And so those of you who did the holding, I want you to get up and come near the microphone so that you can state your name and address, and then tell us why you held it, and that's fine, and we'll go from there. So again, Select Board Wages, 224, 154 is the number that was held. There you go.
Diane Tierney, 51 Milford Street. I don't have 51 here.
A little bit, yeah. Is it on? It may not be on yet.
I have no hair on, it's on.
There's a red light that's on.
Okay.
Get a little closer, you're all set.
Diane Tierney, 51 Milford Street.
A little closer, please. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my question is this, um...
So this position has changed. It was formerly the HR Director and Executive Assistant for eighty-thousand dollars, and now it's just an Executive Assistant. Can somebody tell me how many hours a week this is going to be? Is this a full-time position, or is this a part-time position?
So, given the, the change in the salary, change in the position, how many hours a week would this person have?
Because it previously held two different positions.
For two ways.
Okay.
All right, good question. Portis Luffing, Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. The position is proposed to be funded for full-time, forty hours.
Forty hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this position? Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Hold on, Mr. Flaherty, there's a person, so, so is this about what's been held?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, state your name and address.
Uh, Maureen Byrne, one-fifty-eight Westfurlough Road. I wanted to know why this position was not put in front of its citizens to vote on.
Um, is it? Want to make sure I'm all set on this. Is this, this position, or is it some other position that we're talking about? Want to make sure I've got that clear.
This is, um, Arda, is this one fifty-two?
No, this is one-twenty-two.
Okay, there's a one fifty-two.
No, one-twenty-two. So this is the Select Board, uh, Wages, no. Okay, good. So, if there's no more discussion on that, Mr. Moderator, uh, Mr., right, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Mr. Finance Committee Chair?
Mr. Moderator. I move the town raising appropriate two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars for the purposes of Select Board Wages. Uh, I, uh, account number zero-one-zero, zero-one-zero-zero, one-two-two, that's five-one-oh-oh, that's five-one-oh-oh.
Second? Move and seconded, think I'm recommendation?
Viable action.
Viable action. Any more discussion on it? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up three cards. Okay, all opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by the board. So that's that one. Next one, ladies. Uh, one-fifty-two, Personnel. Uh, that's been held, the number that's there is one-oh-five-five-hundred. I just want to remind everybody, as you come to the microphone and speak to this issue, it's absolutely critical you speak to the position itself and not anything else. So speak to the position. What's over here to do?
Mike Moran, one-oh-two High Street, couple questions. So, position was held, HR slash Assistant, Executive Assistant, sorry. Now, how are we justifying this increase when we haven't had a population increase in town workers? That's the first question. And like, the fire department, DPW, and all administrative people, or executives, you said, are all on contracts. What do we justify getting this kind of money? If you break it down, you're paying like four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars a person for this person to work on it. Otherwise, you should look at a further date and see if you can-
We don't know who it is, but-
Yeah, no, see, look at a further date and see if the job's worth paying that kind of money. That's all.
So justification, what position is said?
Yeah, because like I said, we have a split, we have it split now, now we're separated, and then, like the lady just asked, you know, we're going to hire somebody for that full-time, and now we're going to hire HR, so now we're increasing by double the job, the double what it was paying before, according to the books. Okay? Uh, thanks.
Portis Luffing. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. Uh, so, uh, getting at the rationale for why the Human Resource Director position's being created, uh, this actually has a start back a number of years ago, um, uh, when the town lasted a compensation and classification plan, the Personnel Board in two thousand and nineteen had said the following in their meeting minutes. The Personnel Board also made the recommendation, investigate a future part-time executive position that will combine HR Director with the Executive Assistant position. The PV Personnel Board believes that town must have a full-time position that focuses solely on numerous human resource functions needs, and then have a part-time position that manages the administrative duties such as sweatshirts, your handbags, et cetera. The PV recommend the Town, um, Manager, TM, investigate this model with the Select, uh, with the Board of Select. The town now has one-hundred-and-thirty-three employees, sixty-two benefit eligible, seventy-one non-benefit eligible, including, um, part-time on-call. That number is excluding fifty part-time summer, um, employees that are hired through the Recreation Program. Um, this is an increase in town staff. With this increase in town staff, as well as some of the complexities associated with management of personnel, preparation of policies, management of benefits, financial reporting, employee relations, uh, full-time HR Director is needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Talking about the summer, but it's only part-time, they're here for three months and they're gone. Still going to ju, still pay, still going to be justified, how much you're paying someone to do a job, and what it's worth, and all. But we haven't had an increase, you know, it's not like we have booming, we hired thirty more employees to do jobs, pay jobs on top. How do we justify the pay? You know?
Okay, thank you. Uh, next? That's, thanks.
Maureen Byrne, one-fifty-eight Westfurlough Road. I'm just wondering why this position didn't get voted on by the, um, on the Town Board, by the townspeople creating this position.
Okay, question about the creation of the position. Who would like to address that?
So, uh, the creation of new positions starts, uh, with a policy direction from the Select Board reviewing with Personnel Board, as well as Finance Committee, and then gets inserted into the Town Manager's recommended budget, goes through the budget cycle. This is the avenue for, uh, Town Meetings' consideration of new positions.
Hold, hold, hold a second, okay? That's it? Okay? Go ahead.
And why did we go from the recommendation of being a part-time position to a full-time position?
Okay, why part-time?
And, um, if I may ask for the clarification from the questioner, uh, part-time HR to full-time HR?
Correct.
Uh, as was, um, I had previously mentioned, uh, that, um, the complexities around HR management of personnel has increased, and the majority of the time of the current, um, position is primarily focused on HR activities. I can understand where it may, um, uh, seem that part-time employees may reduce the need for an HR. Part-time employees, um, require just as much attention, they, um, need training, there's onboarding, um, there's a lot of issues that also, uh, HR needs to spend on part-time, just like full-time.
Okay. Anything else? Speak.
Ted Ray, twenty-four Haywood Road. With the number of employees that we supposedly have, this comes out to anywhere between eight-hundred dollars to a thousand dollars per employee. Now, is this person being the director, are they going to be able to handle this job themselves, or will they have to hire a subordinate to work under them where they're the director?
Okay. Uh, will it be the compromise? Most of them?
Uh, having, um, full visibility as far as all the issues that are being dealt with on the HR level, um, I do not anticipate in any sort of foreseeable future where there would be a secondary position that would be needed. We do have other demands, other departments, um, that then require some additional assistance, and this is not one that I would anticipate in the foreseeable future.
Okay, and next, yep, go ahead.
Hi, Sue Perry, twenty-four Haywood Time Road. Um, I'm, I oppose this, um, this fifty-one-hundred, fifty-one-one, uh, one-zero. Um, I, I believe the amount of employees that are in the town can be handled by a part-time person. I, I, I don't, I, I oppose this.
If this is a new position, is this going to be posted?
Okay, new position, will it be posted?
Uh, so, um, existing, we have an, uh, Executive Assistant and HR Director position. Um, it is, the reason why it was not posted was, the HR Director position was not advertised because the town had an employee in the position. While the separation of the Executive Assistant and HR Director, two separate positions, did result in the approval of a new job description from a legal perspective. Um, and this was also, you know, discussion with, uh, Town Council. The town employees who had already been tasked with those duties, um, uh, are the same as those that would be conducted by this separate HR Director.
Okay. Okay, so this, the current position that is coordinated together, the Executive Assistant and the HR Director, is a position that's filled Monday through Thursday, and now all of a sudden, we're going full-time with both positions. I have a problem with that. And I just want to make sure that the town residents know what they're voting for. This is a huge increase. Nobody else is, is getting these kind of raises, and I have a huge problem. If this is what the townspeople want, that's fine, but I just want to make sure you understand what you're voting for. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
I'm Phil Disadder from one-seventy-seven Street. So is there a detailed job description with requirements and specifications that exist out there?
Or, did you remember the question?
Or the HR Director, and I guess, like, the question is, if we split it into one position, I would imagine there's going to be additional certification, there would be additional fees, because I mean, you're talking about literally thirty percent salary increase.
Okay. Got it, so.
Thank you, yes, the, uh, HR Director job description, which was first, uh, reviewed in draft form by the Select Board, uh, they provided comments to the Personnel Board, the Personnel Board met and approved that job description. Uh, there are additional duties that were expanded upon because there were some duties in the current split position that could not be completed. Um, so the job description of HR Director was expanded to take on additional duties to meet the needs for providing additional services to the town employees, and also retired employees.
So, you can find that job, oh, sorry, you can find that job description where?
Um, you can, uh, email me, I, the, the job descriptions are public information, um, so we can easily provide a copy. On the whole, all the job descriptions for, uh, town employees are not, uh, on the website, but they are public, and they are, uh, you can request a copy.
One, one last question?
Yep.
So, if the school today, which is a regional school, and has literally twice the amount of staff and personnel to be managed, currently pays their head of HR eighty-seven thousand, what is the kind of the rationale for a smaller group of people to be paid that amount?
Okay. Town Manager?
So, um, one, and, um, knowing that this sort of question was out there, I, I did talk to the business agent for London School District, and, um, to get a little bit better understanding, and for all these positions, there is, uh, more of the need for recognizing what the marketplace is, is paying, and that, especially when people leave, you end up finding out that you end up replacing at a much higher rate. So specifically for this position, um, the town has engaged the services of a firm called Gob HR, which is something last year's, uh, Town Meeting approved, to do a classification compensation study. They identified that this position, uh, because of the educational requirements, experience, um, and also complexities of the issues that are being dealt with, was equivalent to, uh, the current Director of Land Use and Finance Director. Those two under our current existing compensation plan, and for anyone that has the handout that's entitled, uh, HR Director Fact Sheet, the last page is the compensation plan. When you look at grade ten, uh, the salary range starts at eighty-six, goes to, uh, one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-nine. Step eleven, um, goes from ninety-seven-thousand, uh, ninety-two, to one-twenty-six, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two. Uh, so the justification is that based on grading of similar tasks and, um, uh, requirements for positions, that, uh, the posed salary range falls within either one of those pay scales. Um, that those pay scales, ultimately, uh, the compensation plan will be finalized through the Personnel Board, and then come from the Select Board to hold public meetings and to discuss for, uh, potential action going forward. But, uh, the position, where it falls, uh, it's the last page of the handout for people that grab it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Racketon?
Mr. Racketon, twenty-one, Windy Lane. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to change the amount of line item to zero.
Okay, well, okay, there's been movement seconded to put it in zero. At the moment, okay, because, uh, this is something that was held, at the moment, it actually is zero until somebody makes a motion to make it some different number than that. But since we have had a motion to make it zero, at the moment, that's what it is, it has been seconded. So.
This is Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I have a big comment?
Yeah, let me just explain to everybody exactly where we are right now. So, okay. So at the moment, there's been a motion to make this zero, so therefore, at the, at the moment, that's what it is. Okay, and there's been a second for that. All right? We will discuss that. So, Mr. Simms, say what you need to say, and then after that, we'll talk about, um, the merits of that particular motion for this, go ahead, for, for this, um, line item, excuse, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I just want to provide folks with some context for sort of the, the longer strategic view of how we think about positions in the town. Obviously, adding new positions and adding any expense to taxpayers' wallets is something that's taken very seriously. We have a Personnel Committee that's staffed and with people who are professionals in HR, they have experience. So, they've looked at, advised on the need for this position, as well as the salary and compensation for this position. The Select Board voted to support that. The Finance Committee voted to support that. This is all part of, and this recommendation initially came up several years ago, and we didn't jump on it right away because we were very thoughtful and intentional about when we make a shift to add this kind of expense to our budget, right? This is an ongoing annual investment that we're making in the professionalization of our town services. We're growing, we have a twenty-eight million dollar a year budget, we've got, you know, one-hundred-and-fifty employees that need to be managed. There are lots of complexities in contracts, contract negotiation, salaries, benefits, all sorts of HR things that need to be managed. We've put this off for a few years. We made changes in our Land Use and Inspection Services Department, we made changes in our Finance Department to restructure, reorganize, to professionalize town services for the people, right? This is done for all of us as taxpayers. So I just want to remind folks that this is, you know, one step in a long-term strategic journey of growth and development for the town, and these decisions and recommendations aren't taken lightly, and they're vetted and looked at by lots of professionals, lots of people with experience in municipal governing, in town governing, and with expertise and experience within the operations of Upton as well. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Dave Ross.
Have me a second. Sir, please hold the card down. Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Uh, Dave Ross, twenty-three Haywood Road. Uh, I've worked in corporate America for over twenty years in finance world. I don't enjoy spending money, the Select Board member Simms said, this is our money we're voting on. However, I think it's very important that we consider funding this position. A lot of folks' experience with HR, if everything goes well in their career, is probably on day one, and then days, the last day of their career when they, when they finish. But a good HR person, we should look at as an investment, almost like an insurance policy. Uh, it's a hundred-and-ten-thousand a year, a little bit more, that is a lot of money, but, you know, one lawsuit prevented is a lot more money saved than that. And this individual, by doing not only onboarding people and setting them up, by making sure everybody's trained, educated, coming up with new policies, and, and all that, they're there to serve. to serve in the best interest of the town as long as they're employed. And if they do their job well, they're well-qualified, well-educated HR person, it may seem like we're spending a lot of money for nothing. But when something goes bad, we're going to kick ourselves if we have not funded this and we have, you know, been, this is a term, penny wise, pound foolish. So I strongly encourage people to consider making this investment. We just approved $1.8 million in different types of insurance. This is a small fraction on top of that, and I think it's the right and long-term strategic correction.
Ma'am?
Maureen Byrne, 28 West Borough. So what I'm gathering is currently one employee does these two jobs and we're separating. Is that correct?
Could somebody give a quick yes and no one?
Yes, that's correct.
So if the current person takes one job or the other, we have an open position. So if this particular person takes the HR director job, then we have another open position for the other one, right? Correct?
Sounds like it.
We kind of don't know what that person coming in will accept for salaries, so that's in question.
But you said 60,000 was approved.
Okay. So the thing that I think about, you know, not having raises for many years and this, you know, next year, what the salary will be and the increase will be. And not only that, it's funding the pensions long-term too. You know, this position will come with, I assume, some kind of a pension, correct? So whoever takes this position will have a pension.
Yeah, that's what happens.
Okay.
Mr. Bates?
Mr. Moderator, James R. Bates Jr., 14 Wingham Street. There was a motion made and it was seconded to vote on the amendment to the line item.
There was a motion?
You, Mr. Moderator, allowed discussion. I think it's time, in my opinion, sir, to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Just, just to make it, is there a second on that motion to vote the amendment?
A second. A second.
Just, just to be clear, everything's been done the right way, okay? We've been discussing this line item, okay? A motion was made to put zero there, was seconded. We've been discussing that. That's how it works. That's how it's always worked. Now we have a motion to essentially move the question, is what the motion is, okay? Moving the question means that you're done with the discussion about making it zero, and you want to then vote on making it zero. Okay? So what I'm going to ask you all to do is vote on closing the discussion, okay? We need a two-thirds majority in order to accept that, all right? So right now, you're not voting on whether it should be zero or not, you're voting on whether or not to stop discussing it. I want to make sure we're clear on that, right? Okay. So we need a two-thirds majority to do that, and if there is a two-thirds majority, don't... Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it's really important that I'm trying to explain to everybody the way things work, that we don't have people holding cards up. That's very distracting for those people who are listening. So don't hold the cards up prematurely. Thank you. So that's what we're going to vote on next. Looks like we might have a point of order question or not, I don't know. What's your point of order, sir?
I have some more question to vote. If we vote to zero this out, will we be able to reconsider item 122?
Technically speaking, it's within an hour, yeah, that's, that's a big possibility. We'll have to wait and see at that point.
My reason here is, just so you know, if we vote to zero, then we'll have to vote for HR.
Right. Then, then we'll have to go back and deal with that issue. That is correct. As, one thing to understand, when you make decisions to do things, sometimes other things get, have to be dealt with as well, okay? So, hi, Miss Andrews, how are you? I guess somebody beat you too, right?
But this is only on the zero. This is the discussion of the zero. I would want to move the next one.
Well, that's, that, we're all settled, okay. So then we're clear. If you're done talking about whether or not to vote zero or not, you would vote yes. If you want to keep talking about it, you'd vote no, okay? So all those in favor of stopping the discussion, hold up the green cards. Okay, down. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by a two-thirds majority to stop the discussion. So what we want to do right now is vote on the motion to make it zero, okay? Mr. Flair? And we can, well, it really needs to be a point of information, not a further discussion type point, Mr. Flair, okay?
It is a point of information.
Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Moderator. The prior speaker made an excellent point. If this is zero, this position goes away, okay? It goes away. People understand that.
Well, I think, I think people, right, so as of right now, if we, if this is voted for, the new position of HR director goes away and we go back to what we had, and like a gentleman pointed out, that maybe some number has to be dealt with later at some point, okay? But right now, if it's zero, it goes, yes, that's correct.
Might I make one direct statement, Mr. Moderator?
Which is?
You know, I'm going to ask Mr. Manager to help me out here. If this position goes away, we do not move back to the other position. Am I correct, sir?
I would prefer to pass that off to town council, since that's really a legal question, given the last action we had on 125th.
Okay, so town council will speak on that, and then I will then make a comment on it regarding from a procedural point of view.
Mr. Moderator, through you, if this position is voted, or excuse me, if this line item is reduced to zero, you would not have an HR director, and as it presently sits, you would simply have a budget in the select board line at number 122 of what's been approved at 224, 154. What the board spends that on, I cannot say. It's a policy decision. But you don't, you wouldn't have an HR position.
Thank you. That's right. That's right. And then just to clarify, as an individual said a few minutes ago, if this does get zeroed out, is it a possibility to go back to the other number and reconsider that? The answer to that question is yes, because we are within an hour of that vote having taken, okay? So we'll, we'll see what happens. All right? Good. So while I'm talking about this, this is it. If you want to vote it zero, you'll hold up the green card. If you don't want to vote it zero, you'll hold up the red card, and at that point, we'll do whatever comes next, okay? Everybody clear on that? Good. All right. All those in favor of a zero amount for the human resources wages, hold up the green card. All those in favor of not having zero, that, hold up a red card. Okay. The nays have, which means that the motion to make it zero lost, okay? So that's where we are right now. What does that mean? That means either the finance committee or somebody else needs to come up with some other number to put in there so that we can then move on to the rest of the budget. Mr. Flair?
I'm moving rates appropriate, 105,500 to purposes of, by the item, 0100152 section, 1500, yes, 1500.
Okay?
5100, yes.
Second, moving second in pin count recommendation?
Very well, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so where we are right now is what the original budget number was at when we started the entire process. 105,500. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of that, hold up green card. All those opposed, red card. Okay. Need to have a standing vote, okay? It's just two votes. All right. So all the pads down. I've asked a few folks to help me out with standing votes, okay? And we'll see how many folks show up. I've had at least two, maybe more than two. Some folks in the past would help us out, would be great, even if I haven't talked to you yet, okay? Yeah, let's do it. Kathy, could you come help us out? Okay. So you was married to each other, right? All right. We're going to do a few sections here. Okay, that's it. Does anybody need a pen or pencil? Move it up. So I want the two of you to do a middle section, pin count, the stage. You two can do that, okay? You two will do this side, the back, where they're sitting, and the side of the lid, okay? And then the back row, the back of the sitting. I want to remind anybody who's sitting, there's, we have two non-voting sections and handicap sections. So I assume everyone in those sections are non-voters, is that correct? Good. Oh, by the way, the rest of you who are the power heads and things like that that are non-voters, clearly you guys can't vote. So just to remind you of that, just forgot. So, okay. So folks, you all set? So just to remind you all, you're voting, you're standing the way you voted because it was too close a call. So that's what we're doing, confirming how you held the pads up, all right? So all those in favor, stand for the 105,500. And just, I'm not voting on this, okay? Just so you know. Ladies, all set? Okay? Okay, everyone sit down. Those opposed, please stay. Again, I'm not voting. Okay, everyone sit down, please. The vote passes by a majority vote. Okay. The next one that was held was, the housing council, that police department, police wages was held. So whoever held that, if you please come to the microphone, please. Over.
Hello?
Is it on?
Yes.
Red light, try it again. Okay, look closer.
Yeah.
Want to borrow this for that?
Sure.
Do you do spin concept?
Sue Perry, 24 Hazelton, 10th Row. I just like an explanation of the, the increase in the wages. I want an explanation, please. Thank you.
Okay, so, chief?
Police wages, please. Okay. Michael Brown, 21th Street, Police Chief. And the collective bargaining agreement for the years 25 and 27 was recently signed by Board of Selectmen. This budget includes the increases that were agreed upon with the union.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we need a number from the finance committee?
Do you want to make a vote? No, we can't.
It's a 5100.
Mr. Moderator, make the motion that on police salaries, the amount being $1,826,211.
Second?
Second.
Moving second in pin count recommendation? Yes?
Excuse me, so with the understanding that the motion is raising appropriate.
Raising appropriate, thank you. Right, okay. Raising appropriate, yeah.
Greg Watch.
Greg Watch, by the pin count, anything else on that? No? All those in favor, hold up the green cards, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by the manager. Next one, police utilities, 45,000, and help.
I'd just like an explanation of what that is.
Okay. Chief?
Moderator, police utilities includes...
Moderator, police utilities includes electricity, gas, water, sewer, cable, telephone.
All that stuff, okay.
Everything that you would think of would be utilities.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Flaherty?
Mr. Villanueva.
Come on, let's go.
All right, Mr. Moderator. I move we break the town raising appropriate forty-five thousand dollars for the purposes of account number zero-one-zero-zero-two-one-zero, that's five-two-zero-zero, that's five-two-one-zero.
Second.
Move in second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, green cards up, yes. Down, red cards up, no. Motion carries by a majority. Next, we got animal control was held. Uh, that was wages, twenty-five-three-ninety.
Uh, yes, I'd like just like the animal for wages, baseline, please.
Animal for wages, quick explanation, please.
So Greg, twenty-four, Jan row, brought about. The animal inspector is a paid position by inspection. A dog officer pod is paid by hours. This amount is just an amount. It is in for the budget most of the time. Money is returned to the town and is not spent.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Ms. Flaherty, a number?
Are we talking about both line items, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, at the moment, we're not, no. Talking about the wages.
We answer the ladies' questions, we gotta do it one at once. All right, I believe the answer, the answer's gonna be the same, I believe.
So, okay, so is it okay if we put?
That's fine.
Go ahead, two, two motions, and thank you.
All right, Mr. Moderator, I move the town raising appropriate twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for line item and raising appropriate, uh, one, uh, one thousand dollars. Sorry, that, Mr. Moderator, thirty-seven hundred dollars for line item one, uh, zero-one-zero-zero-dash-two-nine-two-dash-five-four-zero-zero-dash-five-four-two-one.
Okay, motion, second? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold the green cards up. Opposed, hold the red cards up. Motion carries by majority, thank you. And is that it? Set it to these? I think that's it. Close the rate. Okay, well said with this, with the budget. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, back to the right. Keep in mind, uh, we've done four, five, six, seven consent calendar. So now we're on eight. So eight is going to be on page forty-four. Motion, Article eight.
Article eight, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the general stabilization.
Second.
Move in second in one-sixty stabilization, any discussion? This is by majority vote, any? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Article nine, which is on a piece of paper there. Respect the vote, get ready.
Article nine, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred thousand dollars into capital stabilization.
Second?
Second.
Move in second in capital stabilization, three hundred? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, up to, uh, let's see, ten-eleven. We've got now twelve, I believe, next.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars and transfer from free cash the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for a total of six hundred thousand dollars to be used for the construction and/or improvement of town roads to supplement those provided for under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Mass. General Law Chapter Ninety program, including all expenses incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Move in second in fincom recommendation? Thank you.
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
First by the fincom, from two different accounts, but still took the majority. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. I thought we did.
That's that.
That's a consent calendar. And so was eleven. Okay, Ms. Flaherty?
All right, thank you.
No problem. Uh, thirteen?
Article thirteen, I move that the town vote to pass over.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second to pass over Article thirteen. For those of you who are not familiar with that, what it means is that to sponsor does not want to do it at this point. Maybe a few weeks back when they posted the warrant, they did. Now they don't, and that's fine. But if someone has questions on that, we can talk about it. But is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor to pass over it, hold up the green cards. Thank you, opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. So that's been passed over. Ah, sure, thank you. Okay, fourteen was consent, fifteen A was a consent. And we got fifteen B.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Carey, six after his way. I move that the town vote to act on and report to the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five Community Preservation Budget and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year twenty-twenty-five estimated annual revenues to the Community Preservation Committee Administrator Expense Account for all necessary and proper administrative expenses of the community fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Second?
Second.
Move in second in fincom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
CPC recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, that the hat, please. Any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. All opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Flaherty.
May I, I have a question?
Yeah.
When we did the consent calendar?
Yeah.
I believe you said all items were raised inappropriate.
I said unless otherwise stated.
And what would, and what did you state for out of the ten?
The ten, well, I just said that we were gonna do a consent. So, ten. Article ten was free cash. That's what the town accountant said. Okay?
That, that is correct, but I guess I misunderstood what you said because I thought you indicated that most of the consent calendar items were raised inappropriate. If I was mistaken, I apologize.
You, you were not mistaken. I did say that. I said unless otherwise stated, and since that one, there's options. The accountant said that would be by some free cash. Right, for ten. And it does give the various options, so that's a good point. So, in the future, what we need to do, and I'll say this to you and to the accountant and the town manager, when we do the consent calendar, we need to be more specific about where the money's coming from. Miss Lady? And so, you know, just so that in the future, when we're dealing with the consent calendar, we need to be more specific about where, where the money's coming from. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Moderator, one other question?
Yes.
Who, you do? My good friend, the finance director, the town accountant, I have the hand, the podium over there. Kenny, how, how did, what's your source of funding for what the, the conservation fund?
That's a, that's also free cash, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Again, these are the qualifications.
Absolutely. And next to you, we'll, we will clean that up next to you, so thank you. All right. So that was passed over, we're back here. We just did fifteen C, correct? Okay, so now we are on sixteen. Mr. Taylor?
Bill Taylor, two-eleven North Street. I move that the town vote to pass over Article sixteen.
Second? Move in second to the pass over Article sixteen. Again, this is like the last one. This means that we're not gonna take action, we're not gonna buy it or anything like that, which just means we are, are not gonna do it. So, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over Article sixteen, hold up green cards. Thank you, no red cards. Motion unanimously, thank you. Um, we got seventeen. Landout, Mechanic Street.
Phil Taylor, again, two-eleven North Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve Account the sum of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to the Open Space Committee for Survey Engineering, Conservation Description Baseline Report, and legal costs associated with the acquisition of approximately fifteen acres on Mechanic Street, the easterly section of an approximately twenty-two acre parcel located on Mechanic Street for the seven Mechanic Streets, the open assessors map, map fourteen, parcel seventy-one, which will be acquired for conservation as a recreation purposes.
Second? Move in seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Um, CPC recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favor by the CPC, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by a majority. Article eighteen, Blackstone Valley Tech. Motion for that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Flaherty?
I move that the town vote to approve the ten million dollar borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District School Committee on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and amended by its actions of March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four for the purpose of paying costs of roof reconstruction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HBAC units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School located at sixty-five Pleasant Street, Upton, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational School Committee, with the understanding that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, and that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, the MSBA-determined percentage of eligible approved project costs, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and provided that the town's approval of the borrowing is contingent upon the district's ability to secure grant approval from the MSBA, and provided further, however, that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to accept its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by Mass. General Law Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project-funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
So second?
Second.
Second motion.
Move in seconded. There, there was a handout on this outside. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a peek at that. Any discussion? What you say, fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, two, two parts to a question. First is, uh, DVT was the smallest, the most recent and newest construction in town, I believe. Uh, so is this work that was worked that was not included in that project? Anything to do with that project? And then second is, what is estimated that exclusion that the community would have to take? I'm just understanding what that would mean.
Okay, so, question deals with, um, whether, I guess the first question, it has to do with, there's been some work done over there? And this is a different part, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I believe, uh, a DVT, I believe, is the last school building that we've had new construction in this community compared to the.
Oh, compared to the others, okay, fair enough.
So we're putting in a capital project for that, which is a capital project. I was curious if it's work that was not done as part of that early two thousands timeframe project, which is, like I said, the last major school construction project.
Okay.
And the second part is, if it gets approved, what do you think? The school debt, what would you make of that excuse you? It's gonna go for the community for that.
Okay. Who wants to address that? Ms. Flaherty or Dr. Fitzpatrick?
I, I, I will say this, that this is a new, separate project, and I would defer to my good friend, Dr. Fitzpatrick, assistant superintendent Steele over there to, uh, lend more information on it.
Okay, could, uh, gentleman that's here, either, either one of you? If you can, you can ask a question or to answer the question?
Uh, no, I was gonna ask a different question.
Okay, fair enough. And let's let Dr. Fitzpatrick speak to that first, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, Doctor.
Mr. Moderator, Dr. Fitzpatrick, president of the National Security Council for the past thirty-one years. As I heard the question, it was whether or not this constitutes a new project rather than the previous project? Is that the way you heard the question?
That's how I heard it, yeah.
This is a brand-new project, not previously entertained. The last payment of the previous project, which was voted unanimously by the thirteen towns nineteen years ago, is, uh, was already acted upon at this town meeting in the debt section, there's roughly thirteen thousand. So this is entirely separate. In fact, the district, um, you know, I can say, pounced on the opportunity to connect with the Mass. School Building Authority when the Mass. School Building Authority reopened the accelerated repair program after several years of that being closed. You can see the language here is closely connected and is dependent upon the state's Mass. School Building Authority to approve this project, so that we have the advantage of that additional reimbursement to apply to the principal and reduce any debt any of the towns would incur if they vote favorably. Does that answer the question?
The first part of the question. The second part is approximate number based on what you could project. And then, obviously, whatever that number is, it sounds like it could be less than that based on what we get back from the state.
The approximate number is based on, uh, the, the information we have from the union bank officials who are dealing with the municipal sector. They project that to be in F, zero in FY twenty-five, but seventeen thousand absolute exposure FY twenty-six, which will be reduced by any money received from the state. Does that answer the second question?
So that's seventy-two thousand for the town of Upton?
That's correct.
Okay, maximum, and then after that, it would possibly?
The amortization schedule reduces over twenty years.
There you go.
Okay. Often has a ownership of seven point two percent with the other town over ninety-three percent of the obligation, again, if they vote favorably.
Okay, great, thank you. I think that answers the question, so, uh, sir?
I actually think that my name should ask a question for. Uh, so that, my name is Scott Burford from one-sixty-five Warren Street.
Yep.
And my question was, what is the actual liability for the town of Upton with this? Because ten million dollars is terrifying.
Right, right, that's, that's a, it's a, the seven point two percent over twenty years, essentially. Is that the way to think about it?
Once again, Dr. Fitzpatrick, Superintendent, I just wondered, yes, your, your response is accurate. The thirteen-town partnership protects Upton relative to the maximum obligation. It's rather unfortunate what the, the specific language is done to comply with the state's Mass. School Building Authority plan. We certainly wanted to do that to secure the reimbursement. The town has, I think, just over seven percent.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further questions on that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
Just, excuse me, just to, uh, add on to, piggyback to what Dr. Fitzpatrick said. He has indicated that the percentage of the life for the debt our share is seven point two percent. That is based on the current enrollment in the, at the time the debt is incurred. That is based on the current enrollment in the, at the time the debt is incurred. That percentage never changes. If our obligation, based on the student enrollment, should go up to 8, 10, whatever percentage it is, our obligation is still the 7.2%.
Okay, thank you.
So, just as a clarification. Thank you, Dr..
I have a question for the town council. I don't know if we've talked about this, I'm trying to think, is this a majority or two-thirds since we're talking about debt?
No, you're just approving it, it's just a majority vote.
So, it's just a majority because we haven't dealt with the money specifically yet? Okay, thank you, all right, great. So, this is a positive majority vote, any further discussion? Right, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, no, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by a majority. Okay. And, oh, I'll need the card for that, what we'll do in the next one. Article 19, Piscavon Reconstruction.
Article 19, I move that the town votes transfer from free cash for a sum of $500,000 to be used for permitting, undocumented preparation and construction costs associated with reconstructions of Piscavon, including construction oversight and all costs incidental and related.
Second?
Second.
Moving in seconded, Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Thank you, any discussion? I need, oh, two comments, 18. Thank you, no problem, great. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carried by a majority. Okay, 18, 19, we're on up to 20. Highway Department, one-ton truck replacement. Who's here to make that motion?
Hi, I am. Article 20, I move that the town votes transfer from free cash with a sum of $150,000 to purchase a replacement one-ton dump truck with plow and stand for the highway division, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Second. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable option by the Fincom, I need a couple of recommendations. Fincom, favorable, right? Capital budget ready?
Favorable.
Favorable by the capital budget, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries unanimously. 21.
Article 21, I move that the town votes transfer the sum of $75,000 from water retained earnings and $75,000 from wastewater retained earnings for a total of $150,000 for the purpose of purchasing a service truck for the water and wastewater divisions, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Moving in seconded, Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Capital budget?
Favorable.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously.
Moderator, Michael Bradley, Warren Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash for a sum of $65,000, purchase a replacement control group to this department, including all costs incidental and related.
Thank you. Moving in seconded, Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Card please, chief. Okay, any discussion? Seeing, oh, capital budget?
Favorable.
Yep, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by a majority.
Moderator, Michael Bradley, Warren Street. I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash with a sum of $100,000 for refurbishment of Engine 1, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Moving in seconded? Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Capital budget?
Favorable.
Discussion, yes.
Chief, could you tell me what you have to struggle?
I can't.
Okay.
It's a 2006 Pierce.
2006.
Because there are rich towns out there that have a circle thing where they get rid of fire out there, it doesn't matter what mileage or anything is on it. I just think that we should hold off on this and put a few more dollars in and possibly get a newer vehicle than refurbishing a 2006.
So, this is a 2006 Pierce vehicle that's in fairly good shape. With the $100,000 refurbishment, we expect to get another seven to 10 years of life on this piece of equipment. Replacement cost for this would be about $1 million.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the refurbishment, hold up the green cards. Okay, opposed, red cards. Motion carried by a majority. Article 24, message board replacement. Chief?
Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer for free cash with a sum of $41,000 for the replacement of two emergency message boards, including all costs incidental and related.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moving in seconded, collect the cards, maybe one other. Fincom recommendations? Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable action, capital budget? No, they're not. It says on my sheet it is, but that's okay.
More pressure.
Hold up, ah, thank you, okay, good, move. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carried by a majority. Okay. We are up to 25.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash with a sum of $45,000 for the replenishment of beach sand at Kiwanis Beach, including all costs incidental and related.
Second.
Moving in seconded? Finance committee recommendation? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carried by a majority. Okay. 26, we've already passed. 27, feasibility study?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
I move we pass over Article 27.
Second.
Moving to seconded to pass over 27, we all know what that means, any discussion? Seeing?
Yeah.
There's a, well, okay, that's why I'm asking if there's any discussion. There is discussion.
This, Article 27, is placed in the warrant for the Select Board to give the town meeting floor consideration for an opportunity that is only presented, you know, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I'll say. And so, if you walk around town center, you'll notice today that, and you're walking from Rushford and Sons to the Town Hall, when you walk through there, obviously, there's all the utility lines and wires. So, when we created the Downtown Revitalization Workshop Committee, 150 citizens, they put together a vision, a downtown vision for revitalizing the downtown. One of those provisions was to make the downtown pedestrian friendly. One of those things was to put the community center in to attract more businesses. We've done that with Rushford and Sons, we've done it with the community center. You go down there on any given weekend or on the weeknights, you see people walking around in activity. The reason this is coming up now, I mean, who would ever consider burying utility lines? We have a TIP project, which is a state road project that's going to be doing road construction and roadwork through the center of town, and redeveloping, repaving, putting in new sidewalks, and doing all sorts of work in the town center, and it extends beyond that. But that will help beautify the downtown area. And so, this was an opportunity to look at and determine whether or not burying those underground utilities, or burying the utilities, all the wires, was an option. So, obviously, and we weren't sure, and I talked to several people, and initially, we let it go and said, oh, that's kind of a silly thing, but then, I talked to more people, and the more people I talked to, the more we realized, there is some support in town for burying these utility lines. It's not an opportunity that's going to present itself if we don't do it now, it's not going to get done for 100 years. And if you haven't been down there, I am, I spend a lot of time downtown, but it's a very important location to me, it's one of my priorities as a Select Board member. So, I wanted to come to town meeting to give you all the opportunity to let us know, is this something we should even be looking at? And if the answer is no, we won't look at it, and we won't talk about it anymore. If the answer is, hey, you know what, spend $25,000, up to $25,000, get more information, work with National Grid, see if it's possible, and if it is possible, we'll come back to town meeting and say, okay, here's what it would cost to actually do the work. We're talking about millions of dollars, probably, I'm going to ballpark here, call it 3 million, call it 6 million, we have no idea what the number is, but it's a very big number. But we don't even know if it's possible until we engage with National Grid and utilities to ask the questions. This money would allow us to do that research, do the analysis, to see, is this something we want to do? It would also give all of you the opportunity, because I'm sure most of you haven't thought about this, to walk around the downtown, take a look for yourself, and see, would the downtown be more walkable and more human-friendly and more aesthetic for us as a beautiful New England town center if these lines were buried, the road was repaved, we had all new sidewalks, and had these buildings redone? So, that's the idea, that's the opportunity. I can go either way, I was advocating for it, I let it go, I talked to people, I brought it back. So, here we are. My suggestion is, let's at least vote so you can tell us whether or not you want us to continue investigating this opportunity for the town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, before we open it up for discussion, I need to make a statement right now. In my haste to, sometimes when you get in, roll along there, you kind of forget who's supposed to make the motion on things. This is the Selectmen's, I should have asked them initially to make the motion, but the gentleman stood up to pass over, and they didn't realize it was the Select Boards, do you understand what I'm trying to say? So, therefore, I have to apologize to the Board of Select for not allowing you the first bite at the apple, because it is your motion. But the motion on the floor right now is to pass over. So, what does that mean? That means if you really want to discuss it like the Board of Select would like to do, that means you vote no to pass over it, and then we would have it as a motion and go from there. Tip, on the other hand, you want to pass over it, which was the motion by the Finance Committee, then you vote yes to do that. Okay? Again, I apologize to the Board, I should have hooked you first and done it that way.
I'd like to borrow something.
All right, sorry. Okay, so, so right now, the motion on the floor is to pass over, so.
Shouldn't I have left her to make the motion, and then shouldn't we have canceled?
I, that's exactly what I just said, but I, I, listen, I made the mistake, but the motion on the floor is on the floor. It can't, that can't be taken back, okay? And those of you who've seen me do this a million times know that I always go to the sponsors first, but guess what? Didn't happen this time. So, the motion on the floor is to pass over. Any other discussion?
I can say, Laurie, we'll be set now. I'm sure that you'd like not to cancel.
You can say that, great.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, good. Anything else? Any other discussion on whether or not to pass over?
You guys would you suggest? Can I just figure out why I don't want to?
I'm not suggesting whether?
No, I can't hear her.
She doesn't want to pass over.
I'm right here, I can hear. I don't want to pass over.
Okay, could you, so, if you want to discuss why, but someone's already stated why, I don't know if you wanted to add to that.
I, I'd like to say.
Please, yep.
So, Laurie, we'll be set now.
You gotta get closer, Laurie, please.
I'm as close as I think I can get, okay? Is that better?
Yes.
I understand that some people are upset about this article. They think maybe that's just brought forth late, or the amount asked for is random. But this is the only time we'll ever have the opportunity to make our downtown beautiful instead of this architecture being obscured by 10 wires in front of every one of those buildings that we have now, with poles askew and wires hanging all over the place. I went downtown and took photographs because I didn't think it would be so bad, because we used to have three wires. We had for cable, electric, and telephone. But now, there are 10 wires, and because of it, the poles are hanging into nothing straight. So, as Mrs. Simms said, the Downtown Revitalization Committee took a year to decide that we want to keep our town looking old-fashioned, true to its historical roots, and to make it pleasant to walk there. I'm sorry if the process was wrong and the money seems arbitrary, but I'm grateful that we have an opportunity to have this discussion and to keep Upton looking beautiful. It would be very sad if we didn't take this opportunity to preserve our cultural character and our property values. Some people have also wondered whether or not we need to have poles downtown to facilitate 5G, which is an article that we're going to be passing over later because we text copy issue that. What I want to say is, we don't need poles for that. We can get it through cable or fiber. Fiber is best, of course, but the telecom companies are telling us they won't give it to us, because we don't make enough, they don't make enough money.
Let's keep it, man, keep it to this, don't go into that.
Okay, the only thing I want to say is, in phone calls I made, I found out that we can bury, if we decide to bury the utilities to the cable company, which is Spectrum, which would be probably providing our 5G, there is no other cost if it's above the ground or under the ground, if the road is being opened up. It's a decision that's made by National Grid, they have to go along with what they decide, but there is no extra cost to the cable, which would, it's going to be, it's already been upgraded, some is going to be upgraded soon. So, I just wanted you to know that it may not be so expensive in the future, and we can have our beautiful architecture showing, or we can have it obscured by all these wires and leaning poles, and I really am grateful that the subject has been brought up, and I think it's a missed opportunity if we don't at least investigate and discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
From the G89 Dollar Street. Could we make a clarification on what the actual extent of the burying is? I thought it was down Main Street, it was more extensive than just the town center, so, we're the roundabout.
Okay, yeah, so. Okay, hang on a second. Finance Committee, listen, you're right, but whether or not people want to pass this over, the discussion we're having now isn't important for them to make that decision, okay? So, I will allow the discussion because it helps with the motion on the floor. Thank you. Board of Selectmen, Mr. Simms.
Thank you. The TIP project for the paving and the sidewalks and all that extends all the way from Williams Street all the way into the Milford Line, so I have work to just pass Brook Street. So, that's a very extensive project. The burying of the utilities, we're literally talking about 12 poles in the center of town. So, like, if you're standing at Town Hall, and you're looking at the pristine building, or Holy Angels, or you're standing at Rushford and Sons, and you're looking at Town Hall or United Parish, or if you just go over the bridge to the community center, so basically, if you walk from the community center to Rushford, all those old historic buildings are the ones that are obscured by these wires, and that we're talking about putting the utilities underground, we're not talking about putting utilities underground beyond that.
I get you, I get you. Okay, so what I want to say is, I, 150%, like the idea of burying everything, because we lose power, the cost of us losing power in every single neighborhood, every time a tree comes down, and everything else, I just can't believe that that would not be offset significantly by at least research in this. However, I do not support simply looking at the center, because we have to worry about trees and wires going down there, and I care very much about what that looks like, but I just think National Grid needs to come out and really look at that whole expanse where the project is getting done.
Right now, we're looking at that the center, that's what this is doing.
I know, I'm saying what I'm saying.
Thank you, yep. Next one. And again, this is whether or not we should pass over.
Thank you for listening to me, Elisa Burnett, 228 Men's Street. I would just like to address the procedural issues here. I totally believe in a democracy. We've elected our Select Board, I trust them, I think Laura, Marie, Brett are doing a great job. I think Laura, Marie, Brett are doing a great job. I would ask all of us to refrain from passing over because I feel it silences the democratic process and I'd like for us all to have a chance to say our voice and listen respectfully to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good. So, looks like we're all set discussing whether we should pass over. So this is what it boils down to. If you don't want to deal with this article at all, then you would vote in favor to pass over. If on the other hand, you do want to deal with it, okay, then you would vote no not to pass over this. And then we have a motion on this and we would discuss. That's what the situation is. Is that clear to everybody? Okay. All those in favor of passing over, hold up a green hat. Down. All those not in favor of passing over, the red hats. Okay, the motion is lost. Very good. So, by the way... Next time I meet with all my moderators, I'll have a chance to talk to them about, we had a motion to pass over and it didn't pass. And everyone's going to say, are you kidding me?
How'd that happen?
So, it happened tonight. Now, Board of Select.
Article 27. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to be used to engage National Grid to examine and determine the feasibility of burying utility lines within Upton Center, including all costs incidental and immediate.
Second?
Second motion.
Do you have any final recommendations?
Unfavorable.
Thank you. Do you guys have a recommendation on this? No. Okay. So we're going to discuss whether or not we want to put together a feasibility to look at this. Mr. Bates, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're going to be on a very short timeline because we're not to visit future of TIP projects coming through. What we're being asked, what the residents of this town, our towns, being asked is to put together a feasibility to look at spending $25,000 on a study. Should the town of Upton bury the electrical wire under town? I have absolutely no problem with supporting spending $25,000 on looking at reviewing it. Once the conclusion from the review comes back, I might have a different opinion. Very short money spent to analyze what the possibilities can be for the continued beautification of Upton Center.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator. If any town committee or any group came before the Finance Committee and I want some money to study this or that, we're going to want to know something in writing. What is the scope? What is the plan? What's the plan resulted? All right? We're based on a telephone call and really, I hate to throw my good friend, Mr. Manager, under the bus, but he has related to me that he had had conversations with National Grid where they said, by the way, we're, you're not going to engineer this. We're going to engineer this and we could charge you 70, 80, $90,000, or whatever it is. All right? I'm not sure where this $25,000 number came from, but just because we have $25,000 or whatever we have in free cash, doesn't mean you spend it. All right? To a point that a previous speaker made, I believe it just came out within the past couple of weeks that this is not a full depth reclamation. We are not digging up the road to do, oh, we're going to put this in, put that in. This is a mill and overlay and might I just ask my friend, the DPW Director, he cannot in the affirmative or the negative? Am I right? Does the record show that he is responding in the affirmative? This is not a full depth reclamation. It is a mill and overlay. We're not digging trenches. There are areas where we have to modify the sidewalk. There are areas where we have to address some drainage issues, but this is not a full depth reclamation. Okay? I won't do it. This is millions and millions of dollars. You can make a few phone calls and find that out. You don't have to spend $25,000.
Okay. Give him the comments. Any thing from the Board of Select at all or not?
I mean, I respect, obviously, the Finance Committee Chair's perspective and wisdom in these matters. What I would offer as a counterpoint is, I'm surprised that we would not at least let the voters have the discussion and share their opinion. That's all I'm asking for.
We are giving that. So, yes.
Here's our thing for our own 33-year design professional in building designing use. We're asking the voters here, if I understand the article correctly, that we want $25,000 to go for consulting services to understand the opportunity of the project. Am I correct in that ask?
$25,000 to National Grid.
The way the motion is read, $25,000 to National Grid to do the feasibility stuff. That's what the motion is.
Well, Ted, we here just asking for $25,000 of consulting services directly to Grid or for a consultant to go to the Grid and understand the scope of the project to accomplish this outcome. Is that correct?
I think we have an individual who can answer. Mr. Westgate?
I haven't had a chance to talk to him.
Any other?
Ted is Westgate, DPW Director. So in a situation like this, the town cannot engage with their own consultant for this. This is handled by National Grid and their own engineers have to design it. So like the article says, the town has to engage with National Grid's engineering firm to discuss all the logistics of putting the underground utilities in.
Okay, so it's National Grid.
Yeah, so my follow-up question to that is, when the state does come through and do a fleet streets project, which is going to be coming with that, I agree and understand like Finance Committee is talking about full depth reclamation, all that kind of fun stuff. But what you do do when you do these projects is you ensure that all your utilities, buried and not buried, get properly addressed. We still have a TIP project over on Hartford Avenue where we have poles in the little sidewalks two years after the project. I think there is probably some wisdom in making sure we spend money to plan the project properly. So that's, I guess, my point. I probably would agree that some of the consulting will understand. I think we're going to get ahead of ourselves and asking the National Grid to actually design it and I would go with what the select board just said that I don't think there is any way to answer that question. It'll come out in the project when somebody will be scoped, but not to spend $25,000 to understand what's possible, we believe, you know, that seems a little harsh. So I actually, I mean, it's important, the article.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Flanagan?
Just one other thing. Mr. Moderator. We keep hearing National Grid, National Grid. There's a fire alarm system that runs up that road. There's the new fiber optics that we just put through. There's Charter. There's Verizon. There's Grid. It's not just Grid that's involved in why you're going to do this. I believe everything isn't going in the same conduit. Everything has to go in a separate conduit. And when you see the transformers on these poles, they have to be buried in explosion-proof vaults. All right? We're getting ahead. This, the amount of money that this is going to cost is well beyond the scope of what we have available.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
To that point, like I said, we have poles, stone sidewalks on Hartford Avenue South with all those utilities that cannot planned properly as the original project. This is money well spent, even if we just look at the middle. And I would agree that working for a consulting firm or watching our local engineers go and negotiate with National Grid every project, putting building services in, putting utilities for site projects, it is, gets expensive, it gets complicated, there's a lot of different choices and ideas that have to be out there. It's sad, I really think it's, this is money well spent to make sure that in the TIP project we coordinate utilities. And one question can be, how are we going downtown?
Think we're done with this? Okay? So this is what it boils down to. The motion is to spend $25,000 to engage National Grid to examine the feasibility of burying the lines, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? So, all those in favor of that, hold up a green hat. Okay? All those opposed, hold up a red hat. The motion passes by a majority. Article 28.
Article 28. I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to set and adjust the fee charged for each written demand issued by the collector not to exceed the limits set by Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 16, Section 15, as set forth in the law.
Second? Moved in seconded? Any final recommendations?
Favorable action.
Favorable action. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green hat. Opposed, hold up the red hats. Motion carried by a majority. Article 29. Post-projection stormwater management regulation.
I move that the town amend the towns of Upton stormwater bylaws as filed with the town clerk and as reproduced in the handout entitled Article 29 Stormwater Bylaw.
Second?
Second.
So it's both been moved and seconded? Thank you. Any discuss... Now, this is a, this is an amendment to the town bylaws that only requires a majority vote. Could one of you just spend a minute explaining what this is, please?
Mary Overmeyer, Conservation Administrator. All right, Article 29 is before you because we are not in compliance right now with EPA MS4 regulations. DPW received a consent order in January stating the town needed to get the bylaw in place with the required regulations by June 30th of this year. So a copy of the bylaw is available at the handout at the door. We do currently have a stormwater bylaw that is not compliant. Instead of trying to revamp our current bylaw, Beta Group, which is a consultant to the town, recommended adopting their model bylaw, which they have developed and has used in several other towns. This is the bylaw that is before you and it will replace our old bylaw. After this bylaw is passed, the Conservation Commission will also be voting on proposed regulations, which Beta has also drafted. And then the slide shows some of the differences. The proposed bylaw, you know, our old one was a little bit confusing. The new one is better, gone out. The main difference, though, is the review threshold. The proposed bylaw has just a slightly smaller threshold for what we would require for a permit and the older one had, you know, a larger threshold for what was needed for a permit. So the advantages are, it just provides greater protection. We will have MS4 compliance. It should be easier to call. Our old bylaw was confusing. It does lower the threshold and there are, you know, the EPA requirements, you know, this is a record. There's some difference. This is a recommended lowering of a threshold. Some of the MS4 stuff is required for thresholds to review that will change. And this is modeled on a bylaw that has been previously approved by another town. So a lot of towns have this model.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify, they hold up the green hats. Opposed, red hats. Motion carried by a majority. Article, uh, did I have the card? Please, put the motion card forward. We already have, sorry, okay. Article 30, Acceptance of Azalea Lane.
I move that the town vote to accept as a public way the roadway known as Azalea Lane as heretofore laid out by the select board and shown on a plan of land entitled Easement Plan Azalea Lane, JR Estates, Upton, Mass., dated April 21st, dated April 28th, excuse me, 2021, prepared by Groire and Hanlon, Inc., and on file with the town clerk. And authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in Azalea Lane for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Upton and any drainage utility and/or other easements related thereto as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Moved in seconded? I know there's no final recommendation, but there is from the planning board, planning board recommendation. Is somebody here from the planning board?
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street, planning board recommended.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, hold up the green hats. Opposed, hold up the red hats. Motion carried again. Okay, 31. This is the one that's about four or five pages long. So who wants to read it? Just kidding. There's going to be a motion made, quick motion, and then there'll be a little bit of a discussion about what this is. Go ahead.
I wanted to read the whole thing.
I know you did.
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Upton zoning bylaws by adding a new section, 300-7.7, inclusion of affordable housing as printed in the warrant. Inclusion of, as printed in the warrant.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded? Grab the card, please. There'll be a brief discussion and then we'll cover up the questions if it does require two-thirds of a majority vote because it's changing the zoning laws. Thank you.
Mike Antalos, Director of Land Dusen Inspection Services.
Mr. Flanagan.
Just a brief presentation on this for folks who aren't familiar with the term inclusionary zoning, what this article is about. Article 31, Inclusion of Affordable Housing Otherwise Known as Inclusionary Zoning. What is inclusionary zoning? It's a local initiative that requires a portion of housing units in a development to be reserved for affordable housing. Example would be with a 10% affordable requirement, a development of 20 dwelling units would have to provide two units of dedicated affordable housing, leaving 18 market rate units. Who qualifies for affordable housing? Low-income households are defined as a percentage of the area median income, AMI. Housing in urban developments sets income limits for Massachusetts, Worcester County, in sections of Worcester County, Upton's and eastern Worcester County as a part of its determination of areas. And up to 80% of area median income is defined as low to moderate income is the terminology for that. There's more info on the next slide regarding those numbers. What is an affordable unit? An affordable unit is counted as an affordable unit if the rent payment is less than or equal to 30% of gross income, the AMI. Mortgage payments less than or equal to 30%, the AMI. This, and that number typically hovers around $2,000, as you can see in this slide here. This is from HUD, their system that displays the income limits. So you can see there that typical four-person household who may be eligible for one of these units is in the $97,000 range. And so for you to multiply that by 30% that I was mentioning and then divide that by 12, that gets you roughly around $2,000 a month. Next slide. Why provide for inclusionary zoning? Mass. General Law 40B requires that all cities and towns in Massachusetts have a 10, need to have 10% of total housing stock dedicated as affordable housing. Communities that do not have 10% affordable housing stock are subject to comprehensive permit filings, also known as 40Bs. New development widens the gap between total housing stock and that 10% number. The more units that are built, the lower the percentage of affordable housing units the town has relative to that. What is the status of affordable housing in Upton? Currently, the town is noted through the official, now Housing and Livable Communities Agency within the state, 2,967 total housing units, while there are 189 total affordable units. But that, so folks know, that number doesn't include, obviously, the 40B that's currently... the, the fortyB that's currently, um, in front of the, the zoning board now. Uh, so that is approximately a little over six percent, uh, of the total number, um, which is a deficit of a hundred and eight units. Key text in the article, as you can see to the right of the slide, uh, that, that's the schedule that shows, um, when affordable how, when this requirement will kick in for new development. Um, these are pretty standard thresholds, um, that are found across the state in this particular bylaw. The, so, so, uh, starting at six units, a development is required to have one of four of them. Uh, that is maintained at approximately ten percent, uh, requirement up until twenty-nine market rate units. After that, you can see on the, the table there that it, it increases, increases slightly to twelve and a half percent, and then anything over forty-five total market rate units, fifteen Section E states that, uh, for the preservation of affordability, shall remain affordable in perpetuity, obviously, that's in relation to those affordable units, they should remain affordable in perpetuity, applicability. Uh, this section ensures that all development types are subject to this bylaw, and call out specifically even A and R lots, um, that are, uh, maintain a common ownership within a particular time period. Uh, the other provisions within this bylaw include timing of construction of affordable units. Uh, there are spec, uh, specifications in this section to provide for incremental construction of affordable units along the market rate units, so that affordable units do not get left as the last units, uh, in a particular development, and then, you know, the potential that they are never created. Citing affordable units, this section details ways in which the affordable housing units may be cited within a development in accordance with fair housing laws, and the same applies to the next two provisions, which is minimum design and construction standards, as well as minimum lot size. Uh, the, the, the last section noted there, it's not the last section of the bylaw, but the last section noted here, is payment in lieu of units. This option allows for developers to pay a fee into the Affordable Housing Trust, rather than construct the units. Fees get paid into the trust, which is tasked with creating additional affordable units in the town. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Recommendations, both, uh, obviously, uh, being the sponsor of the article, the planning board recommended this, uh, this bylaw, as well as, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust. In addition, the two thousand twenty-three Affordable Housing Production Plan, uh, you can see, I've noted below here, um, oh, it looks, it looks like, uh, when it got transferred to this slide, the, uh, the, the highlight moved, got moved up to number one, but it should actually be, uh, hovering over number three, obviously, which says Develop an Inclusionary or Incentive Zoning Bylaw.
Okay, so, so that right, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay?
So I'll, I'll, I'll yield to any questions.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Linda Gay, nine Fowler Street. The fortyB housing construct was created to address a serious deficit of affordable housing in urban areas, cities, and large towns, which did not have enough housing to support individuals with low and middle incomes. The inclusionary zoning bylaw that communities could adopt, excuse me, um, what had become the state, actually, basically brought forth this inclusionary zoning bylaw that communities could adopt to address what had become obvious demonstrative financial stress caused by the influx of these fortyB projects. The Mass.gov website actually has a bylaw template for reference. I know because I found it in January of twenty twenty-two, when the mechanic foul of property was under attack from an unwelcome developer. Upton needs to regain control over the already burgeoning weight of development and still add to our portable housing inventory. Both yes to this article could not be more timely. Developers are incentivized to build fortyB housing, but large projects like the one proposed at forty-seven May in our historic district exploit the communities that they say they are bringing benefit to. They are using the shortfall of subsidized housing to build projects that are profitable for them, but cost the town a lot of money. These same projects disregard decades of efforts that community members have contributed to establish a vision, plan, and guidelines to protect how the town looks and feels. The developers that sincerely want to partner with Upton to build homes that reflect our historic architecture and truly celebrate our love of open space are welcome. Those builders will come to town knowing that we have adopted inclusionary zoning bylaws, and we will be providing them a uniform, predictable process that gives them more certainty regarding the feasibility of a project. To create a more consistent rate of adding affordable housing being built without straining the community's infrastructure, master planning efforts, and adding to our tax burden, vote yes on this article.
Thank you.
Jack and Pilot, one twenty-five Ounce Creek.
I keep talking right into it. I keep, I'm right behind you.
Jack and Pilot, one twenty-five Ounce Creek.
Got it.
I oppose Article thirty-one. I think it's very complex. I, I'm wondering if the people here even understand what's in at the language, um, it's a lot to digest, um, and this can be very, very costly. Implementing and maintaining certain policies and regulations can be costly over time. A cost-benefit analysis is necessary to determine if the cost of implementing certain regulations exceeds the social benefits. Has that been done? Was there a cost-benefit analysis done on this at all?
Okay.
It usually, yeah?
I'm seeing head shaking, no, so.
Okay, um, what I've seen in the past, I lived in different countries and different cities, and it's usually not very beneficial to any town. Um, it usually raises the property taxes tremendously over time. Um, if people cannot afford housing, they can't have it. It's, it sounds maybe a little bit harsh, but it's not. So you have to earn it. And, um, it's definitely, it's definitely well-intended to, to have affordable housing, but it can be, again, it can be very, very costly for everybody in town over time, and then eventually we all need affordable housing. So, and what I've seen is a decline in, in the infrastructure, in the beauty of cities. So, in the beginning, everybody was always, when I moved to a new town and people implemented, implemented laws like that, they all thought, oh, this is great, and we're gonna help other people, which is definitely something we should do. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. However, when the cost mounted up, when the crime went up, um, certain things, I'm not saying...
Let's, let's focus on the specific, the motion things.
Yeah, so, okay, so this is not necessarily, this is a very, so changing bylaws can be very, very tricky, um, to do that, again, changing certain policies and regulations, and, and this is something so complex that I make a motion to pass over this article.
Well, we can make a motion to pass over it, because it's already on, already discussed, okay? There's other motions that could be done, but the best thing to do is just keep on discussing it and see how the people want to vote. That's the best thing to do at this point. So, thank you. Okay, next.
Hi, um, the purpose of the, on inclusionary zoning bylaw is to give the town of Upton control of what it wants developed and how it wants to develop. Basically, I think, as Michael explained, um, ten percent of Upton's housing stock has to be affordable. Until we reach that ten percent, uh, figure, um, we are, as Linda said, subject to a developer coming in and building, you know, basically whatever they want, wherever they want. So this gives us the ability to take a bit of control. This will not help us overcome our deficit. This will help us stabilize where we are now. When Governor's Landing comes online, Pobler's Creek come on fully online, it's gonna add at least twenty units to our deficit, and until we reach ten percent, we are gonna be subject to, again, uh, the fortyB law. So, you know, this is, and just as far as, um, you know, I, I, I've heard people say that this is not workable, that it's too expensive, um, more than a hundred communities in Massachusetts have adopted, uh, inclusionary zoning, including Hope Dale, Hopkinton, Mendon, Northbridge, and Westboro. I have not seen any decrease in the amount of development going on in those towns. Um, and the other issue, um, and I totally forgot what the other issue was. Been talking way too much tonight.
No, 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 that's okay.
So, I'll be first.
Thank you. Before the next speaker speaks, um, I'm hearing a lot of chatter in the crowd, please, folks, be respectful of the speakers and be quiet. They are quiet with your speaking, so do so for them. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Ted Farrow. Um, I'm totally in support of inclusionary zoning, uh, it's long overdue, I think, for individual speaker, fortyB nineteen sixty-nine. How are we going on making ten percent? It's only twenty-four. So we're not making it. Uh, most communities, especially out of state, that are adopting these and doing actually simpler ones, where they actually put big numbers, a percentage of affordable and diverse housing types being in there, um, basically are having great success in, in all fronts. So, uh, my, do you have one other follow-up question that hopefully the planner can answer? Um, what is our legal requirement with the state with the housing initiatives that are being done to solve the four Bahaazi crisis in Massachusetts? Because we're one of the sec, we're the second worst state in the country for housing affordability, according to the Urban Land Institute and several other, uh, national organizations that, for you.
Okay, I don't wanna get too far off tangent with the guy to what we have, but if there's a quick way to address that, Michael, or we're not, that's a much bigger...
Yeah, Mike Antonellis, uh, Town Planner, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. Yeah, Dan, I'm sorry, yeah, um, I, I don't think there's a quick way to answer that question. Um, you know, uh, but I'll, I'll just offer that, the thing that's probably on a lot of folks' minds, i- is, um, while it doesn't necessarily, uh, address the specific issue of affordable housing, MBTA zoning, um, has been implemented by the state, um, and that'll be coming to a future town meeting, uh, more, uh, for sure within the next year. Um, i- but, and I'm sure within that, the town will also seek to, the planning board will seek to, uh, provide for some sort of affordable housing, um, portion of that, but, but as far as other, um, uh, requirements in order to get, I mean, fortyB is the main, um, carrot stick, however you wanna look at that.
Exactly, characteristic here. Real set?
One more question, we apologize. Um, so, do we feel like we're coordinating with MBTA communities, and where we think the governor may land with the housing issues?
Well, that's a much bigger issue than this, and, and I think we need to focus on this particular motion here, MBTA stuff is for future. Can you deal with that? We have to deal with it.
Margaret Carroll, forty-eight, Oak Drive. I just wanted to address one of the issues, uh, one of the previous speakers suggested that it would be very expensive to implement this bylaw. Uh, this bylaw will be implemented as part of the normal process of planning boards reviewing, uh, proposed subdivisions, so we know additional expense to implement this portion of the bylaw.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Kaczynski.
Ms. Kaczynski, ten, eighty. Um, reading through the article, it says that it's, people are selected by lottery. Is there any way that we could give preference to people who live in Upton, who have kids living in, in parents' basements, trying to save for a house or to move to an apartment? And we also have seniors that are being forced out of houses, it would be nice to see them be able to get an affordable unit.
Sure. I see the head going up and down, but could you comment on that, Michael, please?
Yeah, there, there is a provision within the bylaw that, um, expresses, uh, local preference, the maximum sense of the law, um, so, uh, that is something that, um, I, I, the lotteries obviously aren't conducted locally, they're typically done, uh, through a state agency chap, um, but I can obviously coordinate with chap on, on back end of this to, to, um, express to them that the local preference that's expressed in this bylaw.
So the local preference to the maximum of sense of what the law is reading?
Correct.
Okay, great. Best you can do, go ahead.
Jim Forky, seventh annual way. Um, I just wanted to highlight how important affordable housing is, particularly as it relates to the school district. Um, right now, we're a minimum reimbursement district, so we don't get as much money from the state as other districts do, and so we need to reduce that deficit. This defines a path to help reduce that deficit while preventing fortyB from coming in and building, you know, huge things, um, huge complexes, uh, that, that really capitalizes on the land.
Thank you, yep. Mr. Andy, hey, how you doing?
I don't think I need to...
You don't need to say anything, do you? Okay, fine, all right. Thank you for all that. So, um, as I've said before, with certain things like this, really good discussion, uh, good points, both ways coming out. So, having said that, um, the motion to have the inclusionary zoning bylaw put into place, again, in price of two-thirds majority vote, all those in favor, hold up the green pads. Okay, all opposed, hold up the red pads. The motion carries by two-thirds majority. Article thirty-two.
Oh, there we go.
Many pages to get there.
Senator Margaret Carroll, eighty, drive. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Upton zoning bylaws and zoning map, Upton, Massachusetts, by adding a solar overlay district to the zoning map, by amending zoning bylaws, section three hundred dash two point one and three hundred dash three point one, and by adding a new section, three hundred dash six point eight, solar overlay district to the zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, and again, zoning bylaw change, in price of two-thirds majority vote, thank you very much.
Again, Mike Antonellis, Town Planner, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. Okay, proposed, uh, solar overlay district, Article thirty-two, you see on the screen there is, uh, basically what the proposed, uh, district is, so highlighted on the bottom of the, the, that half of the map, obviously, um, and, uh, filled in with the yellow. Expanded, um, to the right side of the screen, you get a more clear picture of the, the overlay district is highlighted there in yellow. Just an aerial photograph of the, uh, district with a red line denoted, denoting the boundaries of the district. Um, as, as folks can see, uh, that, that is, um, existing, existing sand pits off of , uh, South Street is where this property is located.
That would've been Mike, but where in town on the dock?
Santa.
Okay, Selski.
So, um, and there was a handout, um, uh, tonight for everyone with, uh, the, the maps, uh, denoting the district, as well as showing the language changes. So, the, the handout shows language changes, uh, for which there are, the, the, it greatly reduced the amount of language, uh, which I think is helpful, um, if you sit and look at the changes that were made. The, uh, the handout shows the language changes for the proposed controlling bylaws. There are almost no substantive changes, other than language changes that were changed to more accurately support the intent of creating the overlay district. Uh, one substantive change was to reduce the size threshold for which a, uh, special permit would be required, uh, which results in more restricted language, I'll discuss more on that later. As shown on the maps, the location is along South Street, and it's approximately eighty-six and a half acres in size, uh, which is a relatively large area. Uh, the, uh, the intent of the overlay is to mimic all of the controls that are already in place within the existing zoning bylaw. The current zoning only allows for solar within the commercial and industrial districts along Route one forty. The proposed solar overlay district would only provide for solar as a use, uh, as potential additional use within the overlay district. Next slide. This is just a, a, a cutout of our existing zoning map, circled in red, you see the CNI district, commercial and industrial, uh, denoted also in pink, um, on either ends of, of one forty. That is the current location that, um, ground-mounted solar, uh, can go in, in town. Again, the only use permitted under the overlay district would be ground-mounted solar. All other uses in the AR agricultural residential district, which is the underlying district, would remain. The only difference between the existing bylaws, which control ground-mounted solar in the CNI district versus the proposed overlay, is that the planning board felt strongly that the special permit should be triggered at proposed forty thousand square feet of coverage, instead of eighty thousand square feet, which is the current trigger within the CNI district. The board felt this was, this was important, given the context of the overlay district, which exists within the underlying agricultural residential... which exists within the underlying agricultural residential area, and wanting to be sensitive to the deeds of that particular area in town. Section 300-6.8D lower B makes specific reference to all other requirements found in the current zoning bylaw for ground mounted solar. Next slide. And so, yeah, I'll just read the phrase, the clip from the proposed language right there. "All large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations proposed under the provisions of this zoning bylaw, section 300-6.8," which is this, "overlay district shall be subject to the requirements and provisions of section 300-6.6 large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations." That is what is currently in the bylaw. And so, an overview of that section is just provided below so folks can have an understanding of what those requirements currently exist as. Site plan review through planning board. Operation, they must submit an operation and maintenance plan. Liability insurance must be provided. Financial security must be provided. 100-foot setbacks abutting in a residential district, which will apply to all of the boundaries within this proposed district. Design standards, which include screening, lighting, signage, safety and environmental controls, limits on land clearing, and abandonment and decommissioning.
Before you jump to the next quote, I just want to ask a question. You said "shall be." So since the word "be" isn't there, is that a typo on this? I just wanted to be sure about that. Do we understand that?
Yes.
Okay, it should say "shall be subject," correct?
Yes.
Because without the "be" in there, it doesn't change the intent of what's being said. I just want to make sure he understands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good.
So here are the findings that were made by the planning board and those detailed in the planning board's memo recommending the article. So I'll just go through these briefly. The planning board found that the proposed solar overlay district further complies with Mass General law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which provides exemptions for certain uses, which also includes exemptions provided to solar. Providing an incentive to develop existing cleared land by citing the overlay district where those lands exist, citing the proposed overlay district in a remote area with limited view from public right-of-way in distances nearest residential uses, citing the proposed district in an area with access to three-phase power, ensuring that the use is feasible, and citing the proposed district on a potentially developable parcel of land of residential uses will potentially offset expensive costs pertaining to new road construction, maintenance, and associated costs, preferred demands of public services. But obviously, the overlay district does not exclude the potential for that as the underlying district still remains. It also would take part in achieving state carbon neutral goals. Question that raised, next slide, please. Question been raised about the tax implications of solar farms. For example, there are solar fields that exist along Milford Street owned by a company named Nexamp. It's approximately nine acres worth of panels. The town receives $32,000 annually in tax revenue from those solar fields. That works out to above the base number that I have noted in my hand, which is $250 per month per acre worth of income generated from those panels. So it would actually be beyond that lower $250 per acre number per month. But just so folks have a general idea, nine acres worth of panels, $32,000 annually to the town as a local example. And so that's it. I'll yield to discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Craig Winefuss, Edelstein Road. I'd like to know who is the current land owner of the sand pits parcel displayed on the screen at the beginning of this presentation?
I have to ask, why does that matter?
Land ownership is a public knowledge, so I think that's...
Okay, I don't know. I have no idea. Does anybody have any idea? You don't? You don't? And that's something... Is that something they can get in the town clerk's office or something tomorrow? I don't know.
I do believe it is public record. I do believe within the last year the property has been sold. I do not know the name of the people that have purchased it.
Okay, so...
It is, it would be public record through the county's office.
Okay, that's how to get the information if no one knows who owns it, so...
Mr. Moderator, I could venture a guess as to what the ownership probably is under based on information that I know, but I feel uncomfortable, you know, saying exactly, you know, because it'll probably be off. I don't know if it's held in an LLC or...
Okay.
But I, feel free to contact my office. I can divulge that information. Go on and assess the records or anything. So we can provide that information.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ms. King?
Linda King, Michael. I just have a couple of things that I'm confused about. It's a bylaw change, but then in item number one, it talks about, it seems like it's talking about things that don't have to do with the overlays. Talking about, you know, there's a lot of breadth around all the different places that these solar installations can take place with some, you know, with an intention to minimize the impact on scenic, natural, and historic resources and also the eventual decommissioning, which is, you know, it's a financial decommissioning. Is that our responsibility? Likely not the responsibility of the people who plant the panels. Also, the fact that the tax return on nine acres is fairly small when you consider that, you know, at an acre, you know, someone built a house on an acre right today, you know, they're probably going to generate somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 in real estate tax. So I just want to put that $32,000 in perspective. That is a very, very low number for the way you might utilize, you know, nine acres. So I think from a tax standpoint, it's not a plus. Mostly, I'm just very confused about the fact that there's overlay language and then there's all the other language, which is very broad, I would say, a bit misvalued in terms of how nonspecific it is and that it does not seem like it's specifically addressing the overlay.
Okay. I don't know if anybody wants to try to address that?
Yep. Oh, sure, but I'll address, there was a question about the decommissioning. That would all be controlled through the planning board's special permitting process. Decommissioning is plans and would be submitted to the planning board, kept on file with the special permit, as well as, you know, the financial securities that I mentioned earlier as well. Those would be in place in order to capture for any potential abandonment and need for decommissioning. The town holds those funds typically in escrow or a surety of some kind.
All right.
And then the chair wanted me to discuss the suitability for development of the land. There is a portion of this land that is suitable for, likely suitable for development, needs to be approved and engineered appropriately, but likely suitable for development for housing use. There is a large swath of this land that is connected by an existing car path, which is all within the flood easements owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. And so, development of, the Army Corps controls for structures, especially livable structures. The Army Corps doesn't want anybody building homes in flood zones. But they, my understanding is that they are willing to engage, obviously, the construction of solar panels for, maybe that is acceptable. I don't mean to speak for the Army Corps, but that's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah.
And I was not suggesting that we build homes there. I was making a comment about the value of the taxing.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Margaret Carroll. The question was also about the language of the overlay district and the language of the entire article. So most of this article is already pre-existing. So most of the language, and the changes, the only changes to the article are those listed on the front page of the handout.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? And again, this is required two-thirds vote. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor of the solar overlay district bylaw, hold up the green card. Okay, all opposed, hold up the red card. The motion carries by two-thirds majority. Article 33.
I move that the town vote to amend the town's Upton zoning bylaws, section 300-2.1, table as principal, note number nine, with additions indicated by underline and deletions indicated by strike through as printed in the warrant.
Okay, second?
Second.
Move in, seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Prince.
So, a lot of verbiage up there, but the change is relatively simple.
Right.
So what up top is showing what is currently within the bylaw. What is below that is what's proposed. What is underlined and bold up top is what would be changing with the new language. And then we just want to skip to the next. Yeah, there we go. So what is changing? What will be by right as a result of this article? By right within the Upton Center Business District, we will be adding music stores, art galleries, and other similar retail business. And what will remain as special permit is liquor store, artist slash lib workspaces. And that is recommended by both the planning board and sponsor of the article, as well as economic development.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? Seeing none, again, two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, hold up green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries by two-thirds majority. Article 34.
Mike and I have this tall, short person going, thing going off the microphone here.
Yes.
I move to refer Article 34 to the planning board for further study.
Okay, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to put this back to the planning board for further study. This only requires a majority vote since it's not a change to any bylaws. It's just going back to the planning board. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, this is where we are right now. Once again, I want to thank all of you for coming to the town meeting. You are the legislative branch of the town of Upton. No money gets spent unless you approve. So you're the ones who chose to be legislature. Thank you very much for doing that. It's an important thing that you do for the community and please continue to come out in the future. Again, we had some new things happening this night. That's okay. That's what we're all about. And a lot of old things happening too, and that's okay too. So who would like to make a motion to dissolve?
I move to dissolve the warrant in close to 2024 Upton annual county meeting.
Okay, second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks.